You're in Norfolk. Father Jim.
Let us pray. Lord our God, you have said to us through your prophet Mica that only three things are required of us: to act justly, to love tenderly, and to walk humbly with our God. Heavenly Father, you have always provided us with leadership, men and women, put in place to guide us, to guard us, and to protect us. Father, we thank you for the people that your wisdom has brought to the city of Norfolk. We ask your blessing upon them and upon all of its citizens. May we come every day to live more justly, to love more tenderly, and to walk more humbly with you, our God. And we ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
The motion is dispensed with a reading from the minutes of our previous meeting.
Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Good evening. Welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chamber. For the benefits of those who don't regularly attend, the procedure we'll follow tonight is as follows. We'll take up ceremony items. We have one. Next, we'll move to the public hearings. Then we'll move to the regular agenda items as they appear on the docket. Upon completion of the regular agenda item, those of you who have signed up to speak on new business will have an opportunity. Your names called, please come to the podium. State your address. You have three minutes to speak. To address the council, please be clearly into the mic. Okay, we have one ceremony item, and that's the United Way. To the podium, we have Kurt Hoflick, President of Centerra Norfolk General Hospital, and he is a 2016 United Way Campaign Chair, and he's drawing with Adrian Felts, who is the United Way Key Accounts Manager. Please, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm not here tonight as President of Centerra Norfolk General Hospital. I'm here as a volunteer with United Way. And Adrian is the Account Manager with United Way who assists with the City of Norfolk campaign. And so I'm here on behalf of a very grateful community to say thank you. We count on city employees to keep us safe, to help us in times of trouble, to build our roads, all kinds of things. We are especially appreciative of our city employees' contributions to our quality of life. But your employees have gone way beyond that. Last year, contributing $160,779 to the United Way campaign in support of our community. Over the past five years, your employees have contributed $750,000 to benefit this community. This means a lot to people who are given a hand up during a rough time in their lives. And so on behalf of all those you helped, thank you. We are looking forward to another successful campaign in 2016. We'll be kicking off the festivities this week, in fact. I'd like to especially recognize your city campaign leaders, Mr. Bob Batchor and Mr. Harvey Howard for providing exceptional support in leading this charge. And we have a nice certificate for the city in recognition of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. United Way, that's great work, and we're very grateful and very thankful for what you do for our city and for our region. We look forward to your continued service and our continued support. Again, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Clerk?
Sir.
PH one.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant for PH one has requested the matter be continued to October 25, 2016. Okay, so the motion is to continue. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
PH two?
Public hearing two scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving the relocation of a Virginia Electric and Power Company easement located over city-owned property known as Lake Whithurst in accordance with the easement relocation agreement.
Clerk, call the roll.
And I have an ordinance approving the relocation of a Virginia Electric and Power Company easement located over city-owned property known as Lake Whithurst in accordance with the easement relocation agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
PH three?
Public hearing three scheduled for this day on the application of Timothy M. Massey for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of a portion of Willoughby Bay Avenue having a 40-foot width right-of-way and lying south of 775 West Oceanview Avenue, and by a six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. I have an ordinance vacating a portion of Willoughby Bay Avenue south of the property known as 775 West Oceanview Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
RA one?
Mayor, the applicant for RA one has requested to withdraw this matter.
Motion to withdraw. Call the roll.
Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
RA two? Mr. Clerk, I believe Mr. Homewood or Mr. Newcomb can come and just tell us where we are on RA two.
Yes, sir. For the record, this public hearing was closed at the July 19 meeting.
Thank you.
The item before you was continued from your July 19 meeting. It's a request by Norfolk Christian to change zoning approvals that were given to them in 2011. The approvals at that time laid out some playfields, expansions of parking, and other elements. When they came back in this year, they were proposing to take a corner that had been set up on the corner of Midfield and Filbert and change it from play and practice field to a parking lot. Initially, a bus parking, and then it was revised to car parking. At your hearing on July 19, you heard some concerns about it. You continued the item. We met with them and discussed it. They have taken that plan back so that that corner will go back to what was approved before, which is playfields. They've created additional parking that is adjacent to Thole Street to accommodate the parking that they would lose here. Another concern of the community had been that there was a lack of sufficient parking. They've addressed that. The playfield will be limited to activities no later than sundown or 8 o'clock. It will not be lit. And they have identified some of the other areas where they may in the future expand, all on their own land. There is one parcel, 260 Filbert, which is asked to be rezoned. It's further down on the eastern end of Filbert. It's surrounded by property they own on three sides. And that's essentially all that this application changes now from the original one that was approved in 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomb. Any questions?
I'd just like to thank our mayor, too, for working really hard on resolving this. This, to me, was a very thorny issue for the neighborhood. And from what I understand, I don't know if there are representatives here from the neighborhood.
Ms. Blair.
That they... Thank you for coming. And this really made a significant improvement to satisfy all parties. And I really do thank you for... You're starting out on a great note.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, too, on July 19, I really believe that the community and the school could partner together to make a difference for the community as a whole. And I, too, want to say thank you so very much to the residents in the community and to the school for coming together to make this situation a community effort that will have a great impact on not only the community, but the children who the school will serve in the community. So thank you so very much. Greatly appreciate it, and thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
I have two ordinances for this matter, Mr. Mayor. First is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for property located at 260 Filbert Street from single-family traditional to institutional. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
I'm glad the community could work together as well and come to a compromise on the situation. It's nice when that can happen, and everybody kind of gets what they want, or at least some of what they want. I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to rezone properties located at 255 Thole Street and 260 Filbert Street from I-N-1, conditional I-N-1, and RA eight to conditional I-N-1. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
RA three?
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Carmen's Cafe on property located at 9610 First View Street, and by a six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, we have some proponents here. We have John Willis, and also we have Carmen Carisano. They will speak if there are any questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Please excuse the call. I just had cataract surgery here. My name is John Willis. I live at 2240 Towelton Drive in Norfolk. You don't have the graphics, though. I work with the Fleet Reserve Association, Branch 60, a sea service veterans organization which is located directly across First View and Club 60 Incorporated, which is right next to Branch 60's home. I have eaten at Carmen's Cafe more than once in the past. The food's good. The place is clean. We see no problem with that. I urgently... I enthusiastically recommend approval of this. Okay? Thank you.
So Carmen, any questions? If not, Carmen, I think you're in good shape. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you. You're fine. Thank you. RA four?
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Chipotle on property located at 1087 North Military Highway. By five-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
If any questions, we have Ann Crenshaw. All right, Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
RA five?
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit mixed uses on property located at 4914 Colley Avenue. By six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
RA six?
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit mixed uses on properties located at 4009 to 4013 Colley Avenue and 801 and 809 West 41st Street, and by six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
No one's here to speak?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
RA seven?
I have two items for this, Mr. President. The first is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a religious institution named New Horizon Outreach Ministries on properties located at 1555 to 1575 Carey Avenue. And the Planning Commission, on a six-year vote, recommends approval.
All right, we have Elmer Toll, who will answer any questions. And then we have Mike Gray as one opponent. So Mike did not register to speak, but just wanted to register that he's an opponent. Do we like to speak? Welcome.
I'm reaching out in behalf of myself and several neighbors regarding the special exceptions to operate a religious institute and daycare for Horizon Outreach Ministries. We are opposing the exception. We are concerned with three major traffic and safety and parking issues that will be a detriment to the immediate neighbors and/or neighborhood. The reality is that the additional cars driving up and down our streets and parking in our yards, we have no curb and gutter. During evening and morning rush hours will inevitably have an impact on our neighborhood as well and all the other neighbors trying to get in and out as well. Our decision to oppose the daycare is in no way meant to disrespect the pastor and/or his congregation. Our concern is safety, maintenance, and traffic. Thank you.
All right, we have James Falk, who is a proponent, and we have Sean Matthews, who is a proponent as well.
My name is James Falk. I live at 719 Red Mill Road here in the city of Norfolk. Our church has been in existence for 20 years. We have been in our present location for 23 years. We've also operated a food pantry that feeds the needy for 21 years. We're here asking for a special exception to continue. We have been operating to continue. We have worked with the planning department to provide adequate parking for our facilities. And we're asking that you would grant us the privilege to continue our ministry as we move forward with our daycare. We believe that the daycare will be used to provide adequate or affordable daycare for struggling families and for single mothers who have a hard time maintaining a job and being concerned about their children. So today, I understand, you know, their concern, but we have worked along with all of our neighbors for 23 years. You know, we have not... I haven't had not one complaint that I didn't address and work out with my neighbors. So I'm hoping that you would grant us exception to continue. We're already in operation for 23 years to expand, to move forward with converting our third building at 1555 Carey Avenue as a church nursery and daycare.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Yep. Mr. Smigel has a question. Mr. Falk?
The daycare is only 1,000 square feet? 1,095 square feet?
Yes, it's not a...
Right, so how many children are you going to be?
We're thinking about between 20... Between 20 and 30. We have, you know... I have an architect, but we're still working on that. I'm trying to get past this part, but we're thinking about between 20. Let's say between 20.
Well, I think the law will tell you how many you can have in that. But I didn't know... Do you guys have an answer of how many that would allow?
Mr. Riddick has a question as well.
Yeah, I just want Lenny to give us an idea.
Your answer... Your first answer is correct. I can't give you a number because it's the size of the building and the layout of it. They will have to take that building through and get a certificate of occupancy for it, which they haven't done. What they are doing, though, by this proposal is adding two parking lots to try to accommodate additional parking needs that the church itself and/or the daycare. So the drop-off will be able to be done in the parking lot and not on the street itself.
And are these ba... You're not doing babies. These are older kids?
He said no, sorry.
We probably have... We probably have some babies.
Okay.
Probably we have some babies.
Well, again, as it goes through his building code review, the code for babies is different than it is as children of older ages.
Right, I was on a board with a church that added a daycare, and believe me, it's hard. I mean, the requirements are extreme, particularly if you have a nursery and doorways and roll-away cribs. It's intense to get it done, so... But I just don't see the...
And expensive.
Yeah, inexpensive.
Mrs. Johnson?
So could I recommend to the church that you go on the Virginia Department of Social Services, who is the overseer for daycares, home daycares? They have a site that will provide you the information that is needed, that will tell you the exact measurements for each room that you are considering where the children will be throughout the church. Because that is going to be one of your requirements to get your licensure from the Virginia Department of Social Services. So just go on that website and look at everything. It'll give you the information by ages and how many you are allotted per square foot. And that will be of great assistance to you. You can use that website for anything dealing with your daycare. Anything that you can imagine is on that website. Okay?
So is this the way we have to do this? That we have to first vote on this, and then they pursue their provisions and things? It seems like maybe we're going through all of this if, after all this work, they determine this is not a realistic plan for them.
The building can be done. Now, the age of the children and the ultimate number of children will be a function of the size of the space and how they allocate the space.
I totally understand that, but it may be after the church decides, once they find out how many they actually can accommodate and how expensive it is, out how many they actually can accommodate and how expensive it is, that maybe their idea won't be continued.
I think they determined, though, I've spoken with Elder Falk, and they're committed to this project, and I think they have the wherewithal to carry it out.
Okay.
I think also, if you want to look into this, the city, I think we're still doing it through the Poverty Commission. We have grant money that's available for churches to establish daycares, but there are requirements that you have to have a certain amount of children at it that are receiving social services. So I don't know which staff members here that could assist you with that. And they roll out the application based off of funding and where they need. I don't know if the money's dried up already, but that may be something you look into.
Mrs. Graves?
No, my concern was very similar to Terry's in terms of like putting the cart before the horse, just in making a zoning amendment and changing it. And then if down the line, it may not be feasible, then we're kind of stuck with this. But if they, if the church is committed to, you know, to moving forward with this and getting the proper licensing and things of that nature that's required, then I, you know, I'm fine with that. But I just, you know, don't want to change something and then we have the inability to change it back.
This is a special exception. And if they are, if they receive the special exception, then they have to start or it expires. So it won't stay on the land. It's either if they do not use it properly, going through all the right channels, then it will expire.
When?
I believe that's six months.
Okay, okay.
All right, Ms. Carey, then. Mrs. McClellan?
Yes. So my concern, I just have a question around the opposed. I was concerned about traffic, safety, and parking. Could you cover the parking there a little bit to address that?
The gentleman who has appeared here did not appear at the planning commission. What we had at the commission were 16 people who appeared who were in support of it. It's been reviewed by our staff. It's been reviewed by Public Works. The additional parking spaces that they're creating, they're shown on the site plan that's attached to the staff report you have, are sufficient to accommodate the impact of that school or the daycare. And it will also alleviate the church's use of that land, which has been going on since 1960. So they've been there as a church. This is an expansion into one of the buildings for their daycare to give them a little bit expanded outreach. But the parking will take care of the impact of the traffic.
Mrs. McClellan and Mrs. Johnson?
I think, I was just going to clarify that this isn't, a zoning amendment is a special exception. It doesn't go with the property. It goes with the operator. We've seen a few of these in the past in planning commission. I do know that for the city of Norfolk and for many cities like ours, affordable daycare is a huge issue for our city. And so if we can find responsible, respectful folks who want to provide that, amen, as long as there is parking and appropriate communication with the neighbors. So, thank you.
Mrs. Johnson?
And I think what the church is saying is that this is what we're prepared to build. And based on what you're prepared to build, we'll determine what guidelines you will follow for the number of children who you will care for. Am I correct? So, okay, then it's fully understood that based on the square footage, we'll depend upon the number of children and also be in alignment with the guidelines for a daycare service. Thank you.
Everybody's ready? Clerk call the roll.
I have two ordinances for this, Mr. Mayor. The first is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a religious institution named, I think I read this, so dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
And the second is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a daycare center by New Horizon Outreach Ministries on property located at 1555 to 1575 Carey Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, I say aye, but I have one question that I'd like to ask Lenny or either George. I understand that the church is going to be responsible for putting the sidewalks in. Is that correct? And if so, why?
Well, when they, when they put in their parking lot, there will be requirements to do additional improvements along that street front. And that may be where that's coming from.
Because of the parking lot?
They're putting in two parking lots that are not adjacent to each other, just separated by one of the buildings.
Right.
And when you go through site plan for that, generally there are requirements that you do improvements along the street's edge.
Okay. Any exceptions where the city would do anything?
Well, that's, that's a discussion that would be more appropriate out of Public Works than it would be out of us.
Okay.
We certainly will be able to help pursue that if you'd like.
Okay, I would. Thank you.
Okay.
And I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R eight?
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a commercial drive-through for Wendy's on property located at 1380 East Little Creek Road. By six zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. There, Lisa Murphy will answer any questions, if there are any, as well as Scott Jones, if there are any questions. All right, Mr. Clerk?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I just want to say, one of the nice things about this renovation or rebuild is that the ingress is being removed off of Little Creek Road, which is great in that area because there's a lot of accidents that happen. So there no longer be, they have to go down a side street in order to get into the Wendy's. There's still being egress off, but the ingress is gone. So, aye.
Dr. Whibley?
The bad news is it's going to be another drive-through.
It was already there. It was already there. And it will be further back in trees.
I know, it's fine, it's fine.
It'll be trees, Terry.
I know. Just so long as the trees are maintained.
I agree with that.
All right, aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R nine?
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Bardo on property located at 434 West 21st Street. By six zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
All right, George, Bosch is here to answer any questions. He's the applicant and the proponent. We don't have any? Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R ten?
An ordinance permitting Carol and Caroline Ballard to encroach into the right-of-way of Commonwealth Avenue with a fence and landscaping hedges. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R eleven?
An ordinance requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to establish projects for the surface treatment of six paved segments in accordance with the programmatic project administration agreement between the city and VDOT, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the total sum of $1 million for these projects, subject to in accordance with the terms of the aforementioned agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R twelve, I have a motion to continue to September 13th. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, from Councilwoman McClellan.
Yes, thank you. So moved.
Okay, Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye. And the reason behind the request was there is a community meeting to discuss one of the projects listed tomorrow evening at Pretlow at 7:00 PM, and I encourage folks to attend. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I just want to say, just, I've stated this before, and I know Ron has heard my concern about the VDOT matching funds, that we usually find out about them when we vote on it. And so just whatever the city's vision is for looking at these future projects, where are they going to be and what are we applying for? I know we discussed a little bit, but it'd be nice to have notice of where we're going with the matching funds. And I know we've got a list of projects, but just what those projects are and what we're seeking would be great. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R thirteen?
An ordinance approving an agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation for the adjustment of water and sanitary sewer facilities. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R fourteen?
An ordinance approving a lease agreement between 741 Monticello Avenue as lessor and the city of Norfolk as lesssee for the lease of property owned by 741 Monticello LLC at 741 Monticello Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $814,400 from funds heretofore appropriated to cover the lease payments for the remainder of the fiscal year 2016-17. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I guess I'll, I want to vote aye. But under these next, these next two, 14 and 15, I wonder how much we could save if we built our own property and as opposed to leasing. That's one of Ms. McClellan's predecessors, Baca Nguyen, that was always one of his concerns, is how much we could save if we actually owned our own property. But I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Mr. Riddick's right. And I, you know, we, at that time, asked the city manager to look at more of our properties because we have some space and to have some options that we could either move those renters into or find some places that we could buy. It's discouraging to have two of these again on our ordinances, our agenda. I vote aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R fifteen?
An ordinance to amend the lease agreement between James E. Baylor Holding Corporation and the city for the property located at 3755 Virginia Beach Boulevard. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R sixteen?
An ordinance to amend the lease agreement between 7460 Tidewater Drive Associates LLC and the city for the property located at 7460 Tidewater Drive. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R seventeen?
An ordinance appropriating grant funds totaling $56,549,805 to the school board of the city of Norfolk for Title I programs, other special programs, and the school nutrition services program, and authorizing the expenditure of the funds in fiscal year 2017 for Norfolk public schools. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R eighteen?
An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $1,000, $1,187,800 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the Norfolk Criminal Justice Services Agency, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds in the amount of $1,187,800. Authorizing an expenditure of $158,932 in local funding for the NCJS agency, authorizing the employment of 20 persons for the agency and providing funds for their salaries and benefits. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
I'd just like to say, I'd like to get some information, what they're doing there. We do allocate money to the agency periodically, and we don't ever really hear anything from them about, you know, what types of cases they have, what their outcomes are, the folks they see, that kind of thing. And a lot of money passes through us to them, so I think we need to get an update to see, you know, exactly what's going on. But I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R nineteen?
An ordinance accepting a $165,000 grant award from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to provide funds to elevate one flood-prone private property and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds for the project. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
We'll be seeing a lot of these. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R twenty?
An ordinance accepting $8,000 in grant funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the Burn-Jag Grant Program, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds and authorizing the expenditure of $8,000 in local cash matching funds for the program and total program funding in the amount of $16,000. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R twenty-one?
An ordinance accepting a grant award of $260,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the Norfolk Community Services Board for the development and promotion of an affordable, safe, and supportive housing program for persons with serious mental illness. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R twenty-two?
An ordinance accepting from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the Norfolk Community Services Board a grant award of $15,529 for the project for assistance in transition from homelessness, an award of $32,266 for substance abuse medication, assisted treatment, and an award of $2,451 for the program of assertive community treatment and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds for the program. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R twenty-three?
An ordinance accepting a grant award of $52,777.78 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the Community Services Board to reduce bed utilization at Eastern State Hospital. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R twenty-four?
An ordinance accepting $178,738.56 in grant funds from the Virginia Department of Health Office of Emergency Medical Services for the For Life program, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds for the For Life program. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R twenty-five?
An ordinance permitting Atlas Holdings II LLC to encroach into the right-of-way at 243 West Butte Street with a door awning and sign. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R twenty-six?
An ordinance approving a grant to Virginia Supportive Housing from the Capital Improvement Program, funding the amount of $707,000 for construction of apartments for previously homeless single adults on property known as 2000 Church Street in the city of Norfolk.
I wonder, yeah, if this is really not time-sensitive, and I know it's probably enough support to get this passed, but I'd like for the manager to be here so he could give me some assurances. This is, you know, when we first started talking about this particular venture, Huntersville was already, I guess you'd say challenged. And even more recently, for the last, you know, few months, the challenges have become greater. And I'd just like for the manager to be here. I know this is a project that he's passionate for, and I'd like him to be here so I can ask for some other assurances for Huntersville.
Is there a motion to continue to a specific date?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Riddick, you brought up the position about time-sensitive.
Right.
Tomorrow is the closing on the property. We have Virginia Supportive Housing here. They can maybe talk to you a little bit more.
Well, if tomorrow is a closing, then, you know, I'll just talk to the manager about it further.
About it, sure. Thank you, sir.
So we won't have to worry about, you know.
All right.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
This was a very tumultuous issue that we worked through with Virginia Supportive Housing and the Civic League in Huntersville, as well as the community there. And I know that Virginia Supportive Housing has been working very hard over the course of the last few years to make this project come together, to help those who are in need of some stabilization, to get back on their feet. So I'm happy to see that it is finally coming from an idea onto paper. And now, actually, it's closing. I think we've had a couple of groundbreakings that have gotten postponed. So I think that we're going to be fine. I appreciate the work that you all do with the community and with the homeless community, so I think that we're going to be good. Thank you. And I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Uh, I vote aye, um, and, and as I said, there are a lot of concerns I have, but I still vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Um, I, I'm also gonna vote aye, but I also would like to congratulate Norfolk for, again, taking a lead in providing this necessary housing for our underserved, and I think this will be the same quality program as that that we had at, um, Godwal.
Gosnold.
Gosnold.
Um, Gosnold, if I pronounced it right, and, uh, I think it's gonna be an asset for the neighborhood, and I, again, applaud the city for taking this lead.
Mr. Alexander?
Before I vote, um, Ellis James has, uh, you're, you're, Ellis, your, your six is a eight, but that's all right.
I didn't write that.
Okay, all right.
Ellis, is this gonna change our vote?
Well, I would, uh, I appreciate your confidence in my expertise.
Always.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Deputy City Manager, I, um, do have a little bit of a concern, and I understand Mr. Riddick's concerns, so I'm glad that, uh, he has expressed it. Is there any possibility that because so many of our homeless individuals often are caught up in the questions of, um, their experiences in terms of psychoanalytic treatment and other things, but especially item 21, which was a specific grant award that you've already voted on, and I'm just wondering if there is a specific designation or eligibility aspect to this particular project, um, leaving aside just for a moment Mr. Riddick's concerns. Is there...I would like to support this, but I do have concern about whether or not, uh, people with emotional problems and so on, or some other provisions might be applicable to 26, as opposed to what was taking place with item 21, 21. What am I missing here?
There are, there are city staff here that, uh, if you would like us, we can...
Lord Orlando, come on.
I have Michael Wassaberg here, and I also have Sarah Page Fuller, who's the Community Service Board, 'cause they're kind of two separate entities a bit, but, um, included. So, if, if you wanted, we can speak to Mr. James afterwards and help him understand, uh, how the two relate, or whether or not they're separate or the particulars, or, um, I can have the city staff come up, whichever that you like, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Riddick, what do you want? You wanna hear it? All right, staff, come on.
That should make Ellis, you know, complete.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sarah, why don't you join me? Because this is actually a partnership. Um, all of these pieces work together to address all of the individuals who are experiencing homelessness, so one is not exclusive from the other. In order for us to continue making the progress that we have been, we need to continue to bring in more resources to address individual needs, and I think that's why you see these pieces together. So, um, this is a, a huge step, and I think Sarah can speak for, uh, her project, and would you do that?
So, um, in regards to the Church Street project, um, we have a couple of things that have already been planned for that. Uh, it is a mixed, uh, it's, it's a mixed group, unlike Gosnold, so only a portion of the folks coming in are gonna be, um, coming from the streets or have a specific, um, disabling condition. Um, Church Street, uh, Virginia Supportive Housing is providing Community Services Board with space to operate in the building to make sure that folks that are in there, that were closer to them. Um, and in general, the Community Service Board provides services to about 80% of the folks in Virginia Supportive Housing programs, whether it's at Gosnold or in their Housing First program. So, we are intimately involved in anything that they need, um, and we've already discussed, uh, plans for that. This is not related to R-21, by having asked questions for, um, that will actually be a project that is to be developed, to be planned, in coordination with the housing authority.
So, that project is in coordination with the Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority?
We'll be talking to the housing authority, um, about how to plan for this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there are no plans for this money yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alexander?
I vote aye. All right. R-27.
An ordinance to change the starting time of the regular weekly city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 20, 2016, at 7:00 PM to September 19, 2016, at 8:00 AM, and to move the location of said meeting. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
A second, uh, Mr. James, Ellis James wants to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Williams. I didn't have to change your vote because you voted the way I was intending to support that project. This is the kind of little thing that drives some of our citizens and taxpayers and people who observe the Joneses crazy.
And council members.
I'm sorry?
And council members.
I can imagine. I looked at this, and I looked at this, and tried to figure out what was happening. The only thing I could figure out was it must be relevant to the retreat, and the problem is that you're voting on this and there's no location. To all of our friends who are watching on television, I guess, and that kind of thing, it would be nice to at least know where we're going, why we're going, and that kind of thing. I think it's, I think it's only fair.
I suggested Bermuda, but they didn't agree to it.
I agree. I just didn't think the city would pay.
For the viewers, um, it's in section two. It's the Peter G. Decker Jr. Half Moon Center is the location.
It's where? On section two? So, you have to get further into the weeds?
Uh, y- yes, you, uh, um, if you read it, you will see that the location i- is in the second section. The first section establishes the times. The second section, uh, provides that the location, rather than being here, will be at the Peter G. Decker Jr. Half Moon Center.
Is that by require, is it that way by requirement of some kind of something that we, that was written a hundred years ago?
At our regular location?
No, what do we mean is, does it always have to be in the second line? Why can't it be in the first line?
Right, right. Can it all be together?
You could put the first words. You could put Peter G. Decker Jr., uh, Half Moon Center.
But we don't type up the ordinance. I think it's the, you know...
Will be the location for this.
Yeah.
Yes, you, you could do that.
Well, at this said retreat, I, um, that is not mentioned in this ordinance, I have put as one of my topics to make these ordinances so much more easy to read, and I recognize lawyers have things that they have to do, and maybe by charter, but this is a perfect example of, just say, "Vote to change the meeting so we can have a retreat at such-and-such at this time." Make it easy!
This is the title. "An ordinance to change the starting time of the regular weekly city council meeting to the time and to move the location."
And why, why isn't "retreat" in that line?
We can add that. We can add those words.
Yes, I know, that's what I'm saying.
For the retreat.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue.
And we can put the location in the title as well. That's easy to accomplish.
I think we should call it an advance and not a retreat, just saying.
An advance of what?
All right, thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk? Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Ms...
Aye. Ms. McClellan?
Do we get to take a cruise? Aye. Sorry.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Actually, I thought we were gonna have it in, um, Tommy's Ward.
Yeah.
Remember?
Yeah, and we're supposed to have it yet.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R-28.
An ordinance to amend and reordain subsections A and G of Sections 24-203 and 203.1, subsection C of Section 24-203.1, and add a subsection H to Section 24-203 of the Norfolk City Code so as to require preservation of at least 51% of the building, limit eligible expansion, reduce the minimum age requirement of commercial and multifamily renovation properties from 50 to 40 years, to permit change in use and to provide for an adjusted assessment in order to more accurately assess the increased value.
All right, um, I have, uh, Alice, Alan Grimes, um, did not indicate what you want to speak. Do you want, you can, you're welcome.
She always wants to speak.
All right. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Alice Alan Grimes, and I live at 1322 Mallory Court. The Norfolk Preservation Alliance worked for many years to update Norfolk's historic ordinance, leading to revisions of the city code in 2014. Included were establishment of an architectural review board and implementation of a demolition provision for the downtown historic district. I support the concept of tightening up the tax abatement program to ensure that only authentic renovation projects qualify, and to provide an incentive for adaptive reuse of our historic buildings. However, I am concerned about the language as proposed, specifically the 51% square footage criterion. That criterion could eliminate legitimate renovation projects, such as those gutting the interior of a building. All floors in a building count towards square footage. I understand from the 5:00 PM council meeting that you expect to modify the language further and will look at tax abatement programs in other cities. I suggest you coordinate whatever language you develop with individuals with, with expertise in these matters, such as historic tax credit consultants or the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. Please move expeditiously, expeditiously to develop and modify the language to avoid unintended consequences. Also, I implore you to encourage the Architectural Review Board to exert and correctly apply the city's authority with regard to demolition of historic buildings. You may not be aware of it, but for the very same project that has motivated your proposed changes to the tax abatement ordinance, the developer received approval from the ARB to demolish a building on Charlotte Street that was included in the National Register of Historic Places as a contributing structure to the downtown historic district. Demolition of that building simply did not meet the standards. The ARB is relatively new, and perhaps there has been trepidation by some members about enforcing the new code requirements for demolition. The ARB determines the feasibility of preservation of buildings in historic districts, and by ordinance, the ARB shall consider objective information showing whether preservation of a building would generate a reasonable economic return and not the current property owner's particular financial resources or preference for the use of a structure. The ARB also approved the design for Ocean View Elementary, including the demolition of the most important Art Deco building in the city of Norfolk and its amazing auditorium, despite the fact that two independent assessments by qualified engineers paid for by the city recommended renovation and not demolition. As with development downtown, decisions were made that favored a particular builder. While enforcing the historic district ordinances may cause delay or revision or even end a development project, the city recognized the threats to Norfolk's downtown character and enacted code changes, and they should be enforced. The state historic preservation officer has threatened to remove Norfolk's downtown historic district from listing in the register because of the continued onslaught on the buildings. If that happens, downtown property owners will lose access to state and federal tax credits and thereby millions of construction dollars. Both the planning department and the ARB need you to hold their feet to the fire and ensure they are fully exerting the city's authority to protect our historic character. I'm not clear on why you were voting tonight on the changes to the tax abatement program if you expect to further revise the language, but please make certain that you have the outcomes that you intend. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk? Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Carey?
I feel like I have more questions here. So, this hasn't been reviewed by the ARB? Can we make them, make a discuss?
This ordinance has not been reviewed by ARB. Uh, it, this ordinance was passed primarily as, uh, economic development ordinance and has not been over in the preservation round. We're moving it there with the addition of the 51% minimum, but ARB has not been involved in this economic development program since its inception, so that, that's correct. And, and as Councilwoman Whibley proposed earlier, that she would like for us to move in that direction, that, that is not where this has been, so it has not yet gone there.
Okay, for the time being, I vote nay.
You, you're vote again.
No.
No.
No, okay.
Nay.
Thank you.
I know we gotta review this and go back over it again. I, I question too whether or not, I mean, I know we're looking at it more in-depth. Is there a reason why we're, is there something pending that we have to do this tonight? Or is there anything pending on it that makes it pertinent?
So, Mr. Mayor, can we have further discussion?
Please, you have...
Could we vote to continue?
Yeah.
Could we do that instead?
If there's not anything, is time-sensitive?
There, there is one project that is waiting financing that I, I'm not sure. I think that their closing is scheduled on Friday, but I'm not sure that, um, they cannot postpone it or that the passage of this is required for that, but...
Would this hinder them or not?
They would say that it would hinder them.
If we didn't pass it?
Wouldn't the ordinance that currently stands, sits on the books stand and therefore be even easier for them to utilize the tax abatement?
Yeah, that...
This is, this is tightening it.
It, 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 it would, um, but that, um...
Is it the 40 to 50 years?
It's the 40 to 50 years, yes.
Understood.
I think that, one of the concerns I had was that I read about this in the newspaper before we even knew about it or had a discussion on it, and I think it's important when we have issues that come up like this, that council members are at least notified in advance that this is gonna be coming forward so that we have the opportunity to ask those questions in advance on it, because it is confusing to see some items that are appearing in the newspaper before we've had the opportunity to actually discuss them as a council and that. So, if there was something that's urgent or important with this, then we should probably should have known about this in advance so that we could not have this conversation we're having right now.
I mean, yeah.
And this is just transparency and accessibility for the Norfolk citizenry right here.
No, but I mean, we could have, you know, we could have had this on our agenda and had, like, a presentation about it so that we could have had the discussion and had questions answered about it before, you know, coming here, so...
So, why don't we vote to, um, delay, continue?
Just be continued to the next meeting. It's only two, two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, certainly we can do that, uh, however, if applications come without, um, a specific preservation, um, number, right now, we don't have any requirement that requires an applicant or developer to preserve 1% or 51%. That's troubling for, for those of us who, who believe in preservation, and the applicant can get the abatement for 10 years on the enhancements and not preserving a specific number. That's troubling.
Can we put a stay on applicants right now?
Without making some changes, um, to the, to the ordinance, we, we don't have. Number, the second, uh, problem we have, the age of the building is, uh, determined by the assessor. We don't have a fixed age of a building. Um, is it, is it when, is it when the building permit was, was issued? Is it when the developer transferred it over to the occupant? Is it when there's a certificate of occupancy? We don't, we don't have a, there's no way for us to determine if a building is 40 years old, 50 years old, because we don't have anything, and so we can, we can delay, and I'm okay with that, but more, um, applicants can apply as long as we, we delay, and more buildings that we want to preserve can be fur- further demolished or even destroyed.
Well, can we make their application subject to? I mean, if we're continuing it for, what, a couple of weeks, can we make any new applications come in subject to whatever the new rule, so it's almost like a stay, but they have their, they have their application in, and then whatever the new rules are, they have to comply, they have the first opportunity to be able to comply or withdraw their application?
Well, it, the law that's on the book or the, the rules is on the book is what they will argue, that they will, uh, will use. I saw Mamie and I saw Bernard.
So, um, the ordinance that is here now, um, because we, we do not have anything, as you see it, Mr. Mayor, um, in place, um, addressing the many, um, questions that you have, um, I just asked of Attorney, um, Berner if we voted on this and it's similar to us having something in place right now that the ordinance can be changed. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we could vote on, on this tonight with the understanding that the many questions that, um, are on the table, we come back and look at the ordinance. Are there any other applicants out there other than the one who is pressing for Friday?
That's the only one that I know of. I think that's it.
Okay.
Need to vote?
Okay.
All right, I, I guess if we can be comfortable knowing that, um, we can vote now and then change it later.
Yes, ma'am.
And as I said, have ARB look at it and...
Yes.
And just, and just so it doesn't go in a black hole. It's kinda like when we put things off and say we're gonna come back to them, they go into like a black hole or something, so, um, we just, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, they don't go into a black hole. Um, I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
I just wanna make a, um, a strong endorsement of continued adaptive reuse of our historic structures in the city of Norfolk. It's one of the things that makes us special and unique amongst our sister cities, and I would love to see the opportunity to maybe have a full audit of our historic structures to continue to see the usage of these economic development opportunities. Um, so, thank you for the work of the Historic Preservation Alliance and, um, Architectural Review Board, and I look forward to the continued, um, discussion of this and perhaps revisions very soon, and I vote aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
I vote aye.
I pursue additional items to the service, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the first is a letter from the city clerk requesting confirmation of the appointment of Lauren A. Anderson to the position of Deputy City Clerk, Secretary, effective August 22, and the motion is to, uh, adopt the recommendation and confirm the appointment. Ms. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Is she here? Is she here?
No, ma'am, she is off.
Okay.
She, she leaves at five.
And aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just want to give a, uh, kudos to the Norfolk Emerging Leaders Program. This young lady, uh, was a summer intern.